Welcome, everybody. Including everybody that's in the audience. To the August.
Twenty.
Twentieth. Planning regularly scheduled planning board meeting. This meeting will be video recorded and broadcast over local access. Channel eight and through the town's website at www. Dot eastham dash ma dot gov. We have a rather light agenda tonight, so we'll get into that. The first case is a request to revise a decision letter for case number PB two oh two two dash sixteen. For eighty five Thumpertown Road as shown on map ten parcel one thirty four. Alan Sprawl and Elizabeth Halsey. Sprawl spool or one says sprawl and one says spool. I don't know. Owners and applicants seek a revision to the decision letter filed for February twenty six, two thousand twenty three. To correct the reference site plan. Apparently, the original site plan called for an ADU. Is that correct? And now they are coming back in with the same site plan, but they're not going to use the original existing house as an ADU. And my understanding is it's gonna tear it down.
Yes.
Okay.
And not all the members here, but this was all agreed upon approved at the original hearing.
Mm hmm.
So it's not like they're deciding not to do it now. They that case got closed out with there being no AD. They dropped ADU at that time. It was just a clerical error on the reference to the site plan and had the earlier site plan that did show the ADU. And so when they went to go file the decision letter to registry, they did not match up the correct plan reference. So this is just there was never going to be an ADU the way it resulted back in two thousand twenty two.
So it started as an ADU and then they pulled it from that. Okay. So I don't know whether board members have any questions on this. We will be voting on this to give the authorization for revised site plan approval. Any questions of the board members? If not, is there a motion to approve the request for case number PB two oh two three dash sixteen for eighty five Thumpertown Road? To revise the site plan approval to indicate that there will be no affordable dwelling unit on the property.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Steven? Brian? Michelle?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Patricia?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay. Next case. Calling case number PB two oh two three dash. I'm sorry, two oh two five dash zero eight. This is continued from July sixteenth, two thousand twenty five hearing for four thirty five Shirtlift Road as shown on map seven. Parcel one forty two A Michael Nargie and Kerry L Picard. Owners and applicants seek site plan approval residential pursuant to Eastham zoning bylaw section seven point four point four residential lot intensity and section ten point three site plan approval residential. To demolish an existing dwelling and detached accessory garage guest house and construct a new dwelling on a lot containing twenty thousand square feet or more where the site coverage exceeds three thousand square feet. We have a letter from the applicant's attorney Ben Zender requesting continuation to our next meeting, which I believe is September seventeen two thousand and twenty five. Primarily, the reason is that the conservation board has not finalized the review and it's up for review towards the end of this month. So is there a motion to approve continuation for case number PB? Hang on. Two oh two five dash zero eight to our regularly scheduled meeting of September seventeenth, two thousand twenty five.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Steven? Brian?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
We'll go that way. Kevin?
Aye.
Patricia? Dave?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay. You lucked out. You're up early. Okay, I'm gonna call case number PB two oh two five dash oh nine. This is continued from July sixteenth, two thousand twenty five for four twenty five Massasoit Road. As shown on map eight parcel four two two four Cape Associates Incorporated. Owner applicant seeks site plan approval special permit residential to Eastham zoning bylaw section three point eight point five point one and three point eight point six point four for the following items. Number one. A use requiring a special permit per table of uses proposed use building in office residential district. Number two, the exterior construction or expansion of structures resulting in an increase of more than forty five hundred square feet of buildings, footprints and or exterior of the building or site plan area. Proposed second floor addition to existing building. Number three. Creation of greater than ten additional parking spaces. Number four, creation of five or more new dwelling units principal or accessory use. Applicants seeks an inclusionary zoning special permit pursuant to Eastham zoning bylaw section seven point seven for the creation of six new dwelling units where any project that results in a net increase of five or more dwelling units as part of a single application, whether by new construction or by alteration or rehabilitation of existing structures requires the applicant shall contribute to the local stock of affordable and workforce housing units. Okay, good evening.
Good evening. Matthew Cole for the applicant, the record.
Yep.
So you have, I provided a revised site plan. Did that make it into packets?
Yes.
So spent some time working through with various town staff, the comments that came back from our last hearing and with Paul's help discovered that we do. We do, it appears, have access to Anderson Lane. We worked with the engineers to look at different layouts that would change access and came back to limiting our ingress and egress to to Massasoit for a couple of reasons because we think, we think the flow works better for us and because the place where that connection point to Anderson made most sense was gonna be directly facing into the neighbor, meaning every time headlights come in or out, they're facing directly into that house. So I did appreciate and found valuable that exploration because we know that we can do it. And we also, it was relevant to our discussion with the fire department. So we met onsite again with the fire department and had multiple discussions since the last hearing about turning their truck around, which which resulted in the changes that you see on this site plan. Those are all driven by the fire department at their request. They've reviewed and, and you know, effectively endorsed this plan. And so where you see the grass pave added and the hatched area opposite that, that is specifically for the fire department to turn around a truck. And again, if we were to in the future find that we regretted not connecting to Anderson and wanted to do so in the future, we would, we would simply extend that grass pave area and connect into Anderson that way. So it sort of tees up that flexibility in the future to make that connection if we found that, you know, it it to be necessary. So again, this, this, this plan was the result of several conversations with the fire department and making sure that they were satisfied that they could bring a truck in and turn it around to get back out.
Good. Okay, you'll remember, board members, we had this at last month's meeting and that was a concern as to whether or not the fire trucks could be provided so that they don't have to back out on Massasoit Road and the applicant has apparently resolved that issue with them and potentially with us. So at this point, the only thing I'm going to ask the applicant is because there's going to be a less than attractive goings on in the back of the property in terms of commercial vehicles and construction and everything else. Would it be possible to put some sort of fence with screening so that the rear portion of the site, perhaps at the neck of the fire lane or whatever visually screens from Massasoit Road? Is there anything you could think of, either a swing gate or a slide gate with some you know, sliding on it so that it would visually look better for Massasoit Road not to see all the construction material in the back?
Yeah, we can look at that. Again, we obviously can't come all the way across the sidewalk because one of the two apartment entrances is down, down that end. I will point out, and the planning plan really shows us in a way that the site plan does not, is that there are berms out at Massasoit that will add grade and elevation at the street that doesn't exist now to help that that and the plantings that will help screen the property in the way that it isn't now.
Right.
And I would point out that it would be very difficult to make it look worse than it looks now. We're gonna make it look a heck of a lot better.
Okay, so what we're really talking about is just the neck of the driveway here someplace.
I think, I think where you suggested between the grass pave and that next parking area would be the place if it is feasible.
Okay, board members. We're on new territory and I welcome your comments at this point. Steven?
Well, I was reading this lovely staff reports about them. And they're talking about the the building facade. And apparently it doesn't, we don't meet the facade articulation standard, but you're you're suggesting that we should waive this specific requirement for this in support of getting a decent housing of it. How do we establish pressure for what we waive and what we don't waive?
Well, we're not suggesting that a waiver be granted. We're just not addressing that issue. This is gonna happen. This is, well, no, because I'm not suggesting that you actually waive anything. It's effectively not gonna take any action on that particular item. So this is gonna happen quite a bit, I anticipate, in the future where we're dealing with preexisting nonconforming sites and buildings. And the way that the bylaw was drafted, it doesn't provide a mechanism to waive certain things. But the board is gonna have to on occasion, just you know, not everything's gonna fit perfectly into every category in the design guidelines. And there's just gonna be some limitations. And the board is just gonna have to make some judgment calls about what is the priority. And in this particular case, strict adherence to the facade requirements would basically require the applicant to add superfluous architectural detail onto the building, but it would be, it would be at the expense of the usable space, the interior space of the unit, which would diminish the viability of the unit. So we're kind of, in this instance, the board's gonna have to weigh, is it the aesthetic strict compliance with the aesthetic requirements or priority on viability of the affordable housing unit? Because you have two things which I would argue are both important, but you're at a crossroads, so you gotta kinda, so I would argue that because this is falling under a special permit situation, the board has discretion it can use. And this gets into a, you know, you could argue the technicalities of this, but I don't think the board has to necessarily grant a waiver from anything other than just acknowledge that these two issues are at odds and the board used its discretion, which it has the power to do under the special permit, in my opinion, to say, we felt this about the housing issue, the viability of the unit was the stronger issue.
That probably is, I think it's a great idea. I think we'd need more housing in this town and I think this would go a long way to helping. But and I understand it's discretionary and and I would probably vote now to say, okay, let's go for it, but I'm concerned that in the future, when does a line get drawn? Is it a we're basically saying that these are suggested guidelines, not part of the pass laws we have to live and die by, right?
No, there's, there, there, it's the regulations, but the regulations cannot account for every eventuality in every particular situation, and especially when we're dealing with a preexisting. If, let me put it the other way. If this was a clean slate and they were building from scratch, there isn't really any room for debate. You gotta build it to the specs. The articulation standards, the architectural details, there's no excuse. You gotta do it. We're dealing with a preexisting nonconforming building where the applicant's trying to preserve the footprint. So there's some limitations built into that from the start. And the building itself is larger than what you would, he would be able to build anyway. So that's why, you know, trying to add on and accentuate an already, a building that's already too large for the zone, I think would start to go down the wrong, you know, we'd be getting away from the spirit of what we're trying to do. And again, it's just this is gonna happen again, so it's worth talking about because there's gonna be every single property out there is preexisting nonconforming in some way, whether it's the building, the landscape, the whatever. So unless someone's talking about scraping the lot, starting from scratch, we're gonna have to wrestle with this. And it's just the way that the bylaw, the way it ended up, we don't have a lot of clear waiver ability, but my opinion is the board does have discretion it can use when we're dealing with a special permit. And it's really gonna come down to what the board's comfortable with, but the staff recommendation is that the, these are the two things that you're gonna weigh against. And it's really up to the board, but.
As a, as a point of clarification, do we need to cite it anywhere?
Yeah, I believe we did include the rationale in the findings of fact.
Okay.
Assuming, assuming that the board would.
So then the public is noticed as to what we did. Fine. Yeah. I'm sorry. You done?
Yeah, I just, I thought it was a question worth asking.
Good.
No, it was, it was a good question.
Brian?
Yeah. I have no questions or comments.
Okay, Michelle?
Um, yeah, I love this project, so I was ready to go last time. I do have a question about. So thanks for looking into the Anderson Road piece of it, and that's good to know for future. On the landscaping part, I just, Massasoit is just such a busy street to begin with, and we're adding more volume of cars and traffic and such there. So just you know, I understand native species and all that, but we don't want a lot of height and stuff where there's sightline issues, you know, coming out onto the street. So that's just always, safety is always a concern when there's more volume being added and so I'm sure you've taken that into consideration.
Yes, and as we get into specific placings, plantings, we'll, we'll continue to keep that in mind because that's important.
Great. And the other thing is, this, I don't see it on the site that plan, but maybe it's there and I just can't see it. There's supposed to be bike spots for bikes. Is that happening?
Yes.
Okay.
I have recorded a total of zero bikes at the rack on my property. So maybe this will be the one. Maybe, maybe this will be the one.
Well, you never know. Your affordable housing person might have a bike.
Right.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, Kevin?
I have no particular concerns from last month. There was a question as far as the fire department. Obviously, that's key. They've signed off on it. Having Anderson Lane as a backup is gravy there, too. I've got no questions.
Very good.
No questions.
Patricia, Dave?
I think it's a great looking project and I commend you for it. I have no further questions.
Okay. Um, anybody online? No? How about anybody in the audience?
So chair, I did have a follow.
Yeah, go ahead.
Was there any concern about the covenant, the draft covenant document, or I think you wanted to go over at this point with the board?
No, I think, again, we need to finalize and that'll be part of the process here.
And just for the board, so everyone understood the purpose of the covenant.
Okay.
No, I guess that's a question. It was make sure, was there any questions that the board had?
Does the board want a brief description on the covenant and how it works?
It's referenced in the additional conditions, number nine. No questions.
Want to take a minute and look at it? Board members and see if there's any questions you have. Okay. Well, what's being implied for tonight is two items. One is site plan approval, special permit. And the other is inclusionary zoning. Special permit. We cannot get into exclusionary zoning permit because there's a bunch of requirements that have to be done in order to meet that requirement. We are in a position, however, in my opinion, that we can grant site plan approval. So with that being said, I think we could proceed to close the public hearing on site plan approval. Is that correct? And leave the other one open and continue it?
Yeah, so just to the you comfortable with with that? So basically, I think judging from the board, you're in a, the board's in a position to basically approve the site plan. And then we would continue the inclusionary while we work out the rest of the details, but.
I think we can close to public, though, right? We can close the hearing portion.
Not on an inclusionary. In my opinion, right?
I mean, we have data coming in. Opportunity to comment.
Okay. What do you think, Paul? Can we close something? We have more data coming in on the inclusionary. So if we close the hearing.
Recommend keeping technically the public hearing on the inclusionary open.
Okay.
Basically, you can close out the
Right.
the other part, but that's.
So therefore, is there a motion to close the public hearing for site plan approval for case number PB two oh two five dash zero nine?
So moved.
There is second. Okay, all in, any discussion? All in favor? Steven?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Patricia? Dave?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, so now we can go on. And we have fairly lengthy findings of fact and conditions, so let's go through those. Do we need to read those? Very often, we don't read them all, but where are we with that?
Is that the discretion of you and the board?
Or remember if you feel
to read everything.
Do you feel comfortable enough to approve the findings of facts as written in the memo dated? Let's see, dated eight twenty twenty five for case number PB two oh two five dash. Hold on. Okay. So is there a motion to approve the written findings of facts for case number PB two oh two five dash oh nine?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Steven?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Michelle? Kevin?
Aye.
Patricia? Dave?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay. Now, we have some conditions for site plan approval. And I will read them for case number PB two oh two five dash zero nine. We have the following site plan approval special permit conditions and standard conditions and proposed standard conditions. Number one. No building permit shall be issued until the application complies with all the pertinent sections of the town of Eastham zoning bylaw. Number two. All exterior light fixtures shall be down shielded with a fully enclosed fixture to reduce light spill and nuisances to adjacent properties. Number three, the applicant shall verify final bedroom count and septic design for adequacy with the approved Eastham with the approved plan with the Eastham health department and if necessary, but they will, shall obtain board of health approval prior to the issuance of a building permit. Number four. The applicant is responsible for providing building plans to the Eastham building and fire departments. Plans shall contain information on construction methods and materials sufficient to conduct a full code compliance review. Number five. Plan reviews conducted by town staff as part of the site plan approval have been conducted for conformance with applicable sections of the zoning bylaw and for adequacy of the site for public safety, access and environmental impacts. Additional plan review for health and safety code compliance will be required and may result in changes to the approved plans. Any changes to the site plan and or building plans approved in this case shall be referred to the planning board decision letter. Except those that are deemed de minimis must be reviewed by the planning board. If the board finds the change to be substantially renoticed is necessary for a new hearing. Number six, applicant shall file site plan approval decision letter with the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds and provide a copy to the building department prior to the issuance of a building permit. Number seven, any changes to the final grade must be reviewed by the planning board. Number eight, the planning board reserves the right to monitor ongoing construction for compliance with the approved plan. Number ten, nine, the planning board prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall provide to the planning board a signed deed restriction covenant and other instrument in the form approved by the town legal council to verify that the residential units will be maintained in compliance with Eastham zoning bylaw section three point eight point five point five provision two compliance. The approved instrument shall be filed with the registry of deeds prior to the issuance of a building permit. Number ten, the applicant has agreed to provide a screening fence to screen the commercial use parking area from Massasoit Road. And number, yep.
I don't maybe I'm wrong. Did you think you were going to look at, are you gonna do the fence or you still?
Yeah, can I just weigh in on those last two conditions? So I think, so I would, I would respectfully request that the deed, that the registry recording on the deed restriction related to the affordable unit be connected to the certificate of occupancy and not the building permit? I'm just not convinced that we in town staff can get that together that quickly. Then the second one on the fence is, I want to study that before I commit to it, and I don't know how we, how we do that if it's a listed condition.
Okay, first of all, let's deal with the first one.
So this covenant is what relates to the whole building because you've qualified for the height bonus. So that's why it's tied to the building permit if you build a thirty five foot tall building and then refuse to sign the covenant that restricts all of the units to year round rental or deed restricted. Well, now you have a thirty five foot building and
Yep.
giving the town back what they need. So this is actually the covenant that is related to the height restriction only. The, the deed restriction related to the specific affordable unit will come up under inclusionary and will be tied to the certificate of completion.
So, so which one was in the board packet just for my?
This is the, the height bonus.
So the one that we're talking about right now is the one that's drafted in, in tonight's meeting packet. And so after tonight's meeting, we can work out the language in that?
We can finalize that.
Correct.
Needs to be approved and signed by the select board.
Okay.
Yeah, so basically the
Because there's no like specific AMI limit outline. There's just some language in there that I think has to be refined.
Right, well, that, sorry, you go.
So the, if you look back at the bylaw, I'm happy to pull it up, but the restrictions, this is for everybody, when a project is qualified for the height bonus, so the ability to build beyond our standard thirty foot restriction, it limits all of the units to be twelve month rental, which can be market rate other than the one that falls under inclusionary or deed restricted affordable or owner occupied. And so for the, for this restriction, so you're gonna have one that falls under and we have to deal with the AMI and everything under inclusionary. The other five, the rate is entirely up to you.
So this first covenant just limits to the year round rental and whatnot, and so I have no issue with that. And so I retract my request to tie it to the certificate instead of the permit. That's fine. Thank you.
So then we're only dealing with whether or not a fence will be done. It's a minor detail. I don't know how we can leave, you want to leave it up to the town planner? I mean, how do we do something like this?
I mean, I guess I would say maybe I should have just spoke my mind earlier, but
I don't think
I, I don't think after, after I looked at the plan a little bit and the land keeping plan, I mean, I'm not sure if the fence
Is necessary.
Sorry, because as your, your line of sight, and I'm sure you can speak to this, too. Your line of sight coming either way on Massasoit is really gonna be blocked by the landscaping.
I agree. It's only gonna be when you're directly opposite the driveway, looking down into the property. That's the only place that you would see it.
So I'm happy to explore it, and if you want to leave it to staff and take it out of the conditions, that would be much appreciated.
Is that okay with you, Paul? You're happy with it? We're happy with it? Okay, let's take, let's delete number ten. And then we will have a number ten being prior to the issuance of certificate of use and occupancy for the residential units, the applicant shall satisfy the requirements, conditions as decided by town of, by the Eastham planning board for the inclusionary zoning special permit included in PB two oh two five dash oh nine. Is that stay, that stays? Is that stay, that stays as number ten then?
Yeah, so just for, so for clarity, so uh, condition number nine is for the overall project because it's a height bonus.
Right.
So we can work out the final, the covenant can be signed at a later time.
Right.
But that's tied to the building permit. So once that's done, uh, Matt can get his building permit, get started with the project, but we'll still be working, parallel, we'll still be working on the inclusionary. So number ten is really just to tie both projects together. So at the end of the day, he can still get the whole project going under construction, but just make sure that we tie up the lease end with the inclusionary, so he wouldn't be able to get his use and occupancy until the other secondary inclusionary unit is, um, finished. But at least he, he can get his project started and be going.
Agreed. Do we need to cite that in a condition or?
That's what number ten does.
That's what it does. Okay, all right. Is there a motion to approve site plan approval? Yeah, I just want to make sure we're up to speed on everything. Okay, is there a motion to approve site plan approval special permit for case number PB two oh two five dash zero nine? With the conditions as read.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor? Steven?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Patricia? Dave?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, now we need a motion to continue the inclusionary zoning, don't we?
Now, we, we do have some updates for the inclusionary zoning for the board. If you want to take a few minutes to discuss it, give your applicant a chance to talk about where you're at.
Is that, is that something you'd rather wait or do now? Cause you're not fully out yet on all this, but whatever you prefer, we'll do.
Yeah, but it has a material, uh, impact on when we continue to, let's, let's get into it because I'm not sure that thirty days is enough, right?
Well, we don't think it is either, so what, what, the date to continue to was not anticipated to be September, but perhaps October, but what do you think, Paul?
Oh, yeah, well, if you don't, do you mind, I'll, I can go through a little summary where we are.
Okay, let's do that.
Last time we met, we kind of had a lot, a big overview of the inclusionary zoning, and I kind of stressed that this bylaw pretty intense, the way it's drafted, and it's really geared towards larger projects, multiple unit projects. And it's really a bylaw that's catching the whales and the minnows because of smaller projects, which is likely what we're gonna see. It's just, it is, in my opinion, overburdening. And the reason for that is because the way our bylaw is structured and written, it forces all of these inclusionary units, the affordable units, to be included on the state's subsidized housing index inventory, the S H I list. Because we want to get credit for them, and that's what we get credit as, as a town towards our, the state's goal of getting to ten percent affordability. But it really isn't prac- practical for smaller projects because when you're forcing it on the S H I means that you have to do a, you have to have an affordable, fair housing marketing plan, you have to run a lottery, you have to do a number of paperwork processes, which does get cumbersome and costly. And when we're talking about one or two units, so again, this is one of these things you're trying to weigh, what's the priority? Is it? And the danger is that, and, and I'll give credit to, um, to the applicant, he's been, um, great to work with, very patient, I think wants to see, wants to get a win for the town and get this counted. But there is a breaking point where it's like, is it, you know, how, is it worth it to go through this? So the danger, other applicants might just back away from it, say, well, just do one less and get out from under this whole thing, and then kind of everybody loses. So fortunately, that's not the case here. We've been able to make some progress with the state, and so where we are is that, I'll, I'll finish my point is what we have to weigh, is it more important to get an affordable unit where we have, yeah, we'll have some guarantees that there'll be deed restricted, the affordability will be there, but it won't necessarily show up on the state's list, so we won't get credit in the state's eyes. But in reality, the unit's there. And, and again, that's where you kind of wrestle, what's the more important thing? And in my opinion, the more important thing is let's get the unit created. So where we are in this, um, in this project is we talked with the folks at the state who run the S H I list. In lieu of running a lottery to, for the one unit, um, we were able to substitute that, which that's very involved and costly, um, undertaking. Basically, we can get this, the one inclusionary unit included on the regional ready renter list, which is administered by the town of Yarmouth, and it basically is a substitute for going out and finding the suitable, um, tenant. So that saves a lot of time, money, and effort, so the state's amenable to that. That just gets, this will all get included in the fi- in the final documentation and everything, but, um, the other item was that the inclusion, for inclusion on the state's list, there's a minimum unit size, and the unit sizes that are proposed for this project actually fall slightly under that. Again, we talked to the state and there was a waiver that could be granted for that, and again, it's related to, it's a preexisting building, we're trying to fit into, retrofit into a footprint and so forth, so. Um, Mr. Cole just needs to provide some basic overview of, uh, request the waiver, so we don't anticipate that will be an issue. And then the last, um, item is really just some paperwork of which, these are all kind of boiler, boilerplate, um, documents that, that we use for the leasing. Uh, again, all related to that one unit, so it's really just, um, I don't think it's anything too onerous. The big thing was the ready renter list and the waiver. The other things are really just, um, some paperwork. I, I would say it's really dependent on, you know, we're ready to assist and try to do this as quickly as possible, so, but if you want to give yourself a little extra time, it's really up to you.
Let's keep it going. We've got momentum, let's pave the road for others to come behind us. I, I'm, and, and that said, I'm not in a rush, so October's totally fine. I, I think if we let it go.
I'm willing to give you September, and you can request a continuation.
Let's just do October to give everybody comfortable time and come back to it.
Very good.
Does that sound logical?
Yeah, I mean, that's fine with me. I think that's.
That's good. Okay, so we're gonna need a motion to, go ahead.
I don't know if this is the appropriate time to ask it, but here we are. So in looking at the following documents, I understand everything as far as I know, except what's a lease addendum for the deed restricted unit? What's that mean?
Uh, that, that's, um, that's a good question that I wish I'd be.
Say that.
Well, it's a good question that I don't have a good answer to. It's basically, it's a, it's a document from this, it's a, it's a, it's a state document from the S H I that they want to see go along. Like it says, it attaches to whatever the lease document that Mr. Cole is gonna put together. This is basically an addendum to it. Again, this is part of what we have to get into, just discuss the particulars. Yeah, I'm not, this is, this is my first run through all this stuff, so I'm not totally familiar with it, but it's basically, that was one of the things that because we're doing the ready renter list and not the lottery, they want to make sure they have this lease addendum, which I'm assuming basically has some stipulations that make, that ensures that
Something.
everything's on the up and up. I don't, I haven't gotten into the details of that document, but.
I also had just another thought with this seasonal communities legislation. This issue of sort of overkill and the minnows and the whales is gonna come up, I would think, again and again, with smaller communities. And I'm just thinking that at some point, if, if there's break in the action, that it would make sense to mention that to the people at the state level that are, that are putting this together.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good point where it leads into the S H I.
You're right.
But so, yeah, but on the other side of that issue.
That's it.
And so Paul, as you were saying, on the other, on the other hand.
Uh, yeah, so we have the ability to amend our own bylaw so that we can, without, without having to get in with the state, we can amend our own bylaw to make it so that we have bylaw that works for the large ones and something that works for smaller projects, but again, we don't get the credit from the S H I, so we can work on the state level, but we have the power in our own hands to craft something in the short term that will work, and that's one of the items that is on the zoning task force, um, to do list for, uh, May twenty twenty six, Tom.
Thank you.
Jackie, what's the date in October?
The fifteenth.
Fifteenth? Okay. We need a motion to continue the inclusionary zoning special permit for case number PB two oh two five dash zero nine to our regularly scheduled planning board meeting of October fifteenth, two thousand twenty five.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Steven?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Patricia?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so we'll see you in October. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have some minutes.
Yeah.
Michelle caught a double, double entry. Where somebody was here and not here at the same time, very unusual.
Right.
Okay, so we will scratch out, as members present will scratch out Dave Purnell, and he stays in the member absent column. Okay. So is there a motion to approve the Eastham Planning Board minutes of July nineteenth, of sixteenth, two thousand twenty five, subject to the removal of Mr. Purnell's name in members present?
So moved.
I have a, uh.
Oh, you have something else?
You have another one? Is it your name?
Yeah, the, the, my name is
Oh, gosh.
misspelled in everyone.
On page three.
Except the, uh, the heading.
No, it's, it's spelled correctly here, but not here.
Right, not, not.
It's on page three of five. I missed that one as the checker.
E A R L E Y. I've been correcting people since kindergarten. You can think of it as, um, educated and enlightened.
Yeah, I see it. Yeah. L E Y. Okay, so we'll do a new motion. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the Eastham Planning Board dated July sixteenth, two oh two five, subject to the removal of Dave Purnell's name as mem- in members present and the correction of the spelling of Brian Early's name throughout the document?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. All right, anything else, Mr. Planner, Chairman, not Chairman, but whatever your title is presently?
Dan?
Only, the only other thing that has come up so far for next month is an informal preliminary review request for another ECSD project. It'll be a whole, whole different kind of purely commercial, um, project, so Ben Zender is representing
Okay.
that group, so you're gonna come in with preliminary documents and get your feedback. Potentially some more straightforward presentation.
Okay, anything on the Brundage property coming back in?
No, I think they're they're working on revisions, and I think the last time
Okay.
we all met, it was, it was actually coming into focus with all the bylaws regulations, so.
Yeah, remember that was, uh, the one on Massasoia, and, uh, we had some concerns on separating, um, residential parking and traffic from commercial, and they were gonna work on a separate thing on that. Okay. Um, well, we have some time next month. Is there any documents coming up that we, we should be reviewing? Or they're just not in a form to review yet in terms of, uh, spending some time on administrative type stuff?
Well, um, I think that, you know, Jackie and I continue to look at the application form itself and trying to refine that, especially for residential. I don't know that we will want to do anything on it yet, but I mean, that's something that I think it's just a kind of a work in progress, I mean, because we're changing the bylaws and then we're trying to keep up with the applications. The, you know, make it, you know, make sure we're getting enough detail from the applicant, but also like make sure that the, the format and the process makes sense and is not too onerous, so that's always kind of.
I don't mind, I don't mind putting it on if, if you have something and you feel that, you know, you could share with the board even in a preliminary form. It's, it's up to you. It, you know, I'm just suggesting that if we're light on the agenda, we have an opportunity to use some time for constructive things.
I mean, I, I don't, I don't think we were necessarily planning for that. I just say, just so the board knows, we're kind of always looking at that and trying to tweak it. Uh, I guess I would put it back to the board that if there's anything that the board wants to go over as far as the bylaws or the process or anything, that, you know, if we can.
Do you envision any, um, documentation that's going to be presented to next year's town meeting on behalf of the planning board?
Yes, so the zoning task force just met, um, two, Monday. And we have a list that we're trying to whittle down to a manageable size and, um, the inclusionary zoning by law amendment, trying to tweak that, was on it, um, looking at, um, taking another look at the site coverage, residential site coverage issue, and this is something that has come up with the board too, is possibly trying to put some more metrics on that for a kind of neighborhood averages that the board could use to try to gauge the impact. Um, I think there's some adjustments that need to be made on the motel hotel conversion by law. Few things on potentially fencing and storage of campers and some minor things on sign code, but a lot of those are kind of technical cleanup things, so we might have.
Okay.
So, um, just to summarize it all, um, the task force is going to be meeting, trying to get this final kind of recommendation list together, go to the select board for feedback on, on that, and then come back to the planning board um, to get started.
Do we have a date for the, for this, that board, that meeting?
The task force, myself and Mary knee, the chair, will be at the select board on, um, September twenty second.
I, I do think, Paul, to separate from that, what Pat said, um, I, I think as we learn from these projects, you know, if we can sort of, um, document or codify what we might make as a recommendation to the state, you know, and maybe combine with some other towns that are experiencing the same, you know, process heaviness of, you know, because clearly we want the best outcome on the affordability side, and, and we should get credit at the end of the day, but we're not gonna sacrifice getting credit for doing what's right. But I mean, there could be some advocacy that we do based on what we're learning in real time. This is real cases before us. It's not, you know, let's, you know, create some process and, and advocate for something that we're just theoretically thinking about.
I think, I think there's an opening for that with all the seasonal communities, but I think, as I was mentioning before, I think we have the ability to adjust this bylaw and to make it. There is a way, I think, we can do this so that we can make it less onerous and still get the S H I.
I also think that there's an end to it. In other words, I'm all about, like, if we can change it for other people too, why not?
Yeah.
You know, but keep going.
But on the local piece, it's a combination of getting the bylaw language right, but then also being in a position where the town or other housing agencies can help the applicant kind of with the funding gap and everything. So in other words, like, we could lower the threshold for certain projects and kind of tweak that, but at the end of the day, if we want these to be on the S H I, unless we, unless we get another, another type of renty, there, I can't talk, ready renter list?
Yep.
We need another, because so many moving parts, this is trying to.
I understand.
The ready renter list is administered by the town of Yarmouth, and one person runs it, and there's a lot of work that goes into it. So basically, this is gonna be a case by case basis. We talked to the person in Yarmouth, and she agreed to take this on, but you might get to the point where, yeah, it's gonna be one project too many, so that's one thing. So we need to, other things to explore is can we get another regional ready renter list that's for Eastham or the Arter Cape and so forth, and what's
Yep.
the capacity, so that we have more ability to just get these smaller projects and hopefully get this kind of waiver. So it's not a waiver every time, it's just we know that these projects will get accepted with that substitute. The other part is, in cases where you are gonna be requi- the applicant's gonna be required to do the, do the lottery and have that expense, there are funding sources through the. There are funding sources through the Affordable Housing Trust or CPA funding or other things where a funding gap, if it's a legitimate, you know, need, that could be backfilled so that, you know, so it's a combination of things that we can do within our own local power to do this in tandem with trying to get some larger changes to state. I'm just always, even with seasonal communities and some openings there, it's just
Right.
I don't anticipate that would be an easy thing to like get changes to the SHI criteria.
Right. Well, rather than take it on yourselves if you need any support
Yeah.
us or me or anybody happy. It's a great cause.
Well, what's the, the cost of the lottery system? I mean, I know you can't do it specifically. What are we talking five thousand, twenty thousand?
It's what I've been told, it's in the twenty, twenty five thousand dollar range. I mean, I think it's case by case project and everything, but that's, but because basically you have to do the same process. No matter if it's one unit or a hundred units, you're running the lottery. And so you know, it's
I think my goal would be to get that in the hands of the select board to try to figure out how to get our one unit at this point in time and perhaps more into the list, state list without going through, you know, through the government as a select board trying to get that thing. I think they'd have more success.
I think we should, but I guess at the end of all this, even with the, the waivers and so forth, at the end, we'll come out of this with
Within a unit.
A unit that has a deed restriction that'll be protected as an affordable. It's just we won't get credit from the state unfortunately, but the unit will, will exist with, with, you know, protections on it. So it won't just disappear on us. The affordability just won't disappear.
And I certainly agree that the applicant shouldn't be burdened to get that if possible. Okay. Anything else of excitement? I think we had enough.
That was enough today.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
There you go. All, all in favor? Yes, we're out of here.
Seconded.
I'll second it.
I first, I first did it. I first did it.